Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 23, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein. Laughin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chertel.
Here.
Testa. Sandri. Sherman Savoni.
Here. Item three is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve or accept consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Moved in, seconded. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Good evening. I was just waiting for the phone to... Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I noticed that there was a cancellation of a meeting that was scheduled for April 16th, and it was one of budget workshops. Is that going to be rescheduled, or you're not... Are all those agencies not being questioned?
April 16th was just a budget workshop and...
It was planning and zoning, ZBA, building, personnel, pension, finance, that...
Right. There were no questions from the council for that evening, and I think there was one question that was going to be asked offline. So, those will not be rescheduled.
Okay. Did you know if the question had to do with the pension?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay. That my only... And Mr. Bose isn't here tonight. My only question is, I know that there was enduring the public questioning of the committees. There were some questions of the Pension Commission, and then the fees charged. And I was just surprised. Does the council know what the fees are then, that the town's paying for the pension?
We've been made aware. We did have a presentation earlier in this term from the Pension Commission, so we've certainly been made aware.
Meaning before April 1st, or since April 1st?
Of what year?
This year, the current year, 2019.
No, the presentation was last year.
Okay, because some of the questions came up on the... Whether the funds are being charged, or whether the town is being charged a 12B1, whether they're allowed, and it's... They are called kickbacks, where they're allowed kickbacks because of the size of the type of... Where they're generating... Where they're sending the funds to. Does the administrator partake in any of those fees? I would just hope that the council and/or the controller would find out if we're paying, because this could be hundreds of thousands, if not over a period of years, millions of dollars in fees that we're paying, because we... The town has a lot of money in the pension fund, in stocks, probably close to $100 million, and why everything's still not in an index fund, which, you know, is... Wins 60 to 90% of the time. So, I would just hope that the council... I mean, I know you're looking for nickels and dimes. These are dollars and... These are dollars. These aren't the nickels and dimes. So, I was just hope... And it's a no-brainer. You can move those funds like that if you wanted to, or the Pension Commission can move them to no load, no fee, no 12B1s, and save literally hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. I just hope somebody looks into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chardillo.
Paul Chardillo, 2 Bayberry Drive. I hope everybody had a great Easter weekend. The reason I came tonight was... Has to do with something that I heard at the public budget meeting. And I want to make sure I heard it right, so I'm gonna recount it to you and then ask a question. It occurred when a member of the public was questioning the cemetery association officials. And there were a couple of issues that were raised. One of them had to do with a building that was recently constructed, and there was some conversation around that. And then it went over to the budget. And there were two things that I think I heard, and this is what I want to raise. One was that one of the officials stated that the budget of the cemetery is confidential and not available to the public. The second one item that I heard was, by the other official, was that they were not required to even submit any kind of documentation, but rather the administration simply approved the $85,000 in this... In the budget. So, my question to you is, is that accurate? Do we not require some kind of accountability? And I'm not picking on the cemetery, because there's 18 other social programs.
The budget that was presented to us has been presented by the mayor, and the mayor had his requirements for what would support an allocation, and I'll certainly let the mayor speak to that.
Okay.
We request any backup that's available. For the most part, there's backup. Not always. In the case of the cemetery, they recently changed the leadership, and as I understand it, they did not have a document to send, and budget wasn't increasing, so we accepted what we had. Certainly, we need the work to be done for another year, but they were, as I understood it, in a transition period, so we're not gonna... We're not gonna stand on the point of, you didn't give us backup, therefore you'll get no money, because work has to be performed for the town.
So, I might understand that that was an exception this year with the cemetery, and that all of the other social programs are indeed required, and in fact, the cemetery will be required to provide documentation.
Mr. Chardillo, I said we requested.
Right.
I don't know that everyone complies with that request. Then it's our judgment whether we provide the funding or not. But we do request any backup that's available to come along with a budget request. Sometimes it's detailed, sometimes it's simply a letter that says X amount of money is requested by whatever the organization is. But it's requested, not necessarily required.
Right. All right. Well, I guess I'll address this to you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think it's okay for the town to give money to any organization without requiring accountability. I don't think that's fiscally responsible. I don't think it's transparent. And if I look at the bottom line, this year it's $1.3 million. I look at it over 10 years. We're talking $15 million.
For $15 million, for what?
For social contributions made by the town.
Over a 10-year period?
Right.
Okay.
And I guess I'd have to disagree with the mayor. He said, "We ask for it, they don't provide it." My view is, and I hope that it's the council's view, that they're required to do it. I don't know if it's a legal issue or not, but it certainly is appropriate from a fiscal point of view. I mean, we have organizations in here that represent 616,000, 162,000, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the council wants to discuss and take a vote on some kind of a threshold. You know, maybe if it's under 5,000, you can waive that requirement and just, you know, the mayor can divvy it out any way he wishes. But I think that that's not good fiscal policy. So, you agree with that point of view, or...
I'm not gonna speak for the council, and there are nine people who sit here, and they're certainly entitled to take whatever action they'd like to see the... To request further backup or not. So, I'm not gonna speak for the council, but your concern is duly noted. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Chairman, just to clarify a little bit, there are organizations on there. They send a lot of backup. Certainly, the Senior Center, the transportation program for the Senior Center, the WCI. There are a number of them that have a lot of backup, so it's not like no one is providing any backup. There are a few that are fairly minor amounts of money that may just send a letter of request. But you can't generalize and say that no one sends any backup.
Right. I guess, again, I have to disagree with... It sounds like it's a very loose, what I would call, willy-nilly process. You send me some backup, and if you don't, if it's a certain amount of money, we don't worry about it. You're dealing with public money. You're dealing with my money and $43,000 other residents' money. Local government should have constraints in place. There should be a document. Maybe it's a one-page document. It doesn't have to be a 50-page document that comes to the town with somebody's name on it that says, "This is how we're gonna use the money that you're going to give to me." And anything short of that is, I think, fiscally irresponsible. And I hope that the council will take that to heart. And when it comes to approving this budget, because we're talking about $15 million over the next 10 years. It's 1.3 this year, and it keeps going up. So, you know, I hope that it'll take it to heart and require that that happen. I don't know anything in the charter that requires that to happen, but I think there's probably an assumption that it does happen during... As part of the budget process. And as far as folks not having time, I would approve these budgets contingent on submitting that documentation. It's very simple. They could probably do it in the next hour. Well, not an hour, next week. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I close the public question and answer period, and we move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding UP-SEU, Local 424-17, Supervisors' Managers, Case Number 2018-NBA-285, Arbitration Award. Evening.
Counselors, good evening. Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director.
Good evening. Dennis Chicorello, Town Labor Attorney.
Thank you. For the benefit of the public, if you could bring us back up to speed with this.
Sure. The town recently received an interest arbitration award in a contract involving the supervisor managerial employees of the town of Wallingford. Essentially, what the changes are health insurance. There's an increase in the plan design, and also the cost share that employees need to pay. It also makes the High Deductible Health Plan becomes the core plan for this group effective July 1, 2020. The wages that were provided is 1.75 on January 1, 2018, January 1, 2019, 2%, and then in the third year, 1.9%. And the other issue that was substantive for the bargaining unit is that instead of six months, employees now have 12 months to use compensatory time from the time it's earned. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that may come up.
So, just for the... For clarifying, for the benefit of those participating, this is an award after an arbitration. This isn't anything that we have to approve, and the only action that we might take is if we don't agree with the decision. We could move to reject and then send it up for the next level. And Mr. Chicorello, if you could remind us what that would be?
Yes. Well, the next level, and I think we've only gone there once in my history with Wallingford, the next level is in front of another three-person panel who... Which reviews the record. There is no further evidence, and has to make its own decision by selecting the last best offers on each of the 14 issues.
Am I correct that, based on the result, that you do not recommend that we take this to the next level?
Yes. We do not recommend that. We won, or we had the same LBOs on most of the issues with two small exceptions. So, we don't recommend any further action.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I had a couple residents contact me, and I just wanna clarify. I think I've figured out the answer to this question. We were given as backup a copy of the existing contract, and then a letter with attachments that memorializes the award. Is that... That's accurate?
That's correct.
Right. You received a copy of the agreed-upon language, the award, and then I put everything together into a composite document and sent that out to...
And I appreciate the attention to detail, but particularly with regard to the Article III Union Security Language that's illegal. It was probably illegal even when ratified. But anyway, that's as a result of a contract that existed pre-Janus, and you're just showing us the language that... By which the savings clause, which is embedded in this document, would imply a change. It's not affected by what's before us here tonight. Just a matter of that this contract predated Janus. Is that fair to say?
Yes. And the negotiation process, and also the arbitration process, predated the Janus decision. So, though we attempted at one of the arbitration hearings, presumably the first one after the July... I'm sorry, the June 26 decision in Janus, I think that was the date, we attempted to raise that issue. The union objected that it hadn't been raised as was required by ground rules earlier in time, and even though that particular union has also agreed to, let's say, Janus compliant language in other units, it just resisted having that be an issue in this particular arbitration.
More of a procedural thing, because procedure requires that you raise it before you get to that level. So, I can respect that. But just while we're on that issue and this contract, and it does require in Article IV authorization of the deduction, and I don't know if that came up in your discussions of possibly trying to resolve this issue. And I know the MPP that was previously filed, my understanding has been withdrawn. How are we dealing when one does not authorize?
We don't take union to us out.
Okay. I just... Thank you for that information, and thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just more of a comment than a question. I was just really happy to see in Article on page 12, the contributions for the health insurance, the way they're... Article 19, sorry, Section 1D, page 12. I was just happy to see that the HSA plan, it's cheaper for the employees to get. So, the contribution is skewed toward the HSA. I think this is the first town contract I've seen. So, I hope this is a trend that we see in future contracts. I don't know if it's a result of the award, or if it's more...
Well, it's pretty much, we have agreement with at least... With at least three bargaining units in town, that the HSA, the High Deductible Health Plan, becomes the core plan. And that was negotiated, and in lieu of making the High Deductible Health Plan the core plan, the 22% cost share for the PPO was something that was arbitrated.
Okay. So, it was a happy accident, kinda?
It sort of becomes the core plan if you look at what the cost shares are for each plan.
Okay. Well, either way, I hope it's something... I don't hope that these... That future contracts go to arbitration, but I do hope to see this in the future.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Certainly. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just... Thank you for a second bite at the apple. The gross wage increase is reflected by the cover sheet. Are there steps involved with this contract?
Yes, there are.
So, you know, as you know, I usually... A component of my computation is steps, because they are an increase. So, the January 1, 2018, 1.75, what is it in actuality?
Well, for the bargaining unit itself, and also too, I just want to point out that non-bargaining managers follow this contract for their pay raises and for insurance as well. For year one, the wages, which includes pension and Medicare, is $101,424, which is spread out across the town as well as the utility. So, the total GWI increase for this bargaining unit, which reflects, you know, step increases too, is 101,424.
What was that number?
$101,424.
So, by way of percentage, if I was to compute in the benefit increase as a result of this award, that you would compute... I mean, usually I do step plus the gross wage increase. Do we know what that percentage is?
The percentage in between steps? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but that was factored into the total, you know, the increase.
Okay. So, the 1.75 is the award through the process?
Correct.
Including the step, or not including the step?
Including the step.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? All right. If there is no action, then thank you for your presentation and your time.
Thank you very much.
Right now, we're going to... There is nothing for item seven. I'm gonna ask for a motion for executive session pursuant to item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move. We go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut Journal Statute Sections 1-225F, 1-206B, 1-206E, 1-210B4, and 10 to discuss pending litigation claim involving CMEC arbitration and legal advice related hereto.
Second.
All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the council is back in public session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve the decision as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Just to be clear, the motion is to approve the settlement as discussed in executive session. Yep. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor signify... Actually, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. There's action. We're still dealing with litigation, pending litigation, and so there's not gonna be public discussion about what was discussed in executive session. I'll entertain a question, but I won't promise you an answer.
I know I'm not gonna get it. When will this... The amount of the settlement be no longer a secret?
That I can't tell you, what anybody else...
Is it known, but you just can't discuss it, or is it unknown?
That's a complicated question.
Really?
Well, yeah, because there are parts of the settlement that are already calculated, and there are parts of the settlement that aren't yet calculated.
Well, the four years have been calculated, yeah?
I'm not gonna...
Final question, and then I won't belabor the point. I'm curious as to how the council perceives the harm caused by revealing a settlement you've already made.
No, we're approving our side of it. The other side has not yet approved it, so it's still pending litigation until the other side approves it.
The other side has calculated and indicated, has it not, that if you approve it, they'll approve it?
I'm not really comfortable hanging my hat on that premise.
So, back to my question, if you would. What is the harm of revealing a number? You're afraid they're gonna back out? Is that what you think? By revealing it to a number they already know, well, they're gonna back out. Is that the harm?
There is that possibility, in which case we're back to litigating.
No, I understand possibilities. I'm asking you, if that is what you think the harm is, you tell us. I mean, you know the number, they know the number. We know that. We know you know the number. We know they know the number. That's not a secret. The only people that don't know the number are the people not sitting here in the Record Journal.
Mr. Chairman...
So, the question is, what's the harm that you're afraid of in revealing the number?
Mr. Chairman, it's really on advice of council. It's not only my advice. It's Corporation Council Small's advice, and it's Attorney O'Neill's advice, that this be kept confidential at this point.
I understand advice. So, what's the... What are you afraid of? Well, what you're saying is, there's a little coaching, and advice of council, don't say anything. So, the question is now to both of you. What are you afraid of? Thank you all.
With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Sherman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
There being no further business on the agenda... Gentlemen, thank you for your time. There being no further business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.